Call the meeting to order. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is an elected unpaid group of 10 citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda, on other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the Board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required on the Open Meeting Act NJSA 1046 at sequencia, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton Paken and the Times on January 9th, 2020, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The budget adoption was re-advertised on May 1st, 2020. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 2230 Recording Devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. The representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools, as more specifically designated in NJSA 18A 38 8.1. In the event that this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central administration, and district-wide staff-only votes; otherwise, are considered abstentions.
Thank you. Matt, would you please take the roll call?
I will. Beth Baron?
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Here.
Dan Dart?
Here.
Jess Stoich?
Yeah.
Betsy Calber Bagwell?
Yeah.
Ryan McDonald?
Present.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Present.
Peter Katz?
Here.
Daphne Kendall?
Yeah, mute, Daphne.
I see her.
That qualifies.
Susan Cantor?
Yeah.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is Item D1: Adoption of Minutes for the April 28th, 2020 meeting. Can I have a motion? Peter? Second. Jess? Any discussion? Can we have a roll call to approve the minutes of April 28th? Yes?
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Stoich?
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Ryan McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Unanimous, the motion passes.
Thank you. I'm just going to make some brief comments tonight because we're having a special meeting. So, thank you, everyone, for joining us. Tonight, we'll be talking about the 2021 budget. We'll be taking a number of personnel actions and other necessary business. And as we do every meeting in these COVID days, I'd like to acknowledge gratitude for those who are on the front lines of this emergency, helping us through the pandemic. I also want to express our sadness and regret for those lives that have been lost and those experiencing financial hardship and uncertainty. We are also very grateful for the courage, creativity, and resiliency of our PPS staff, students, and families. And particularly tonight, I want to give a mention to those students whose milestones like graduation and prom and eighth grade graduation and fifth grade moving on will be very different this year. One highlight for tonight is to acknowledge that our superintendent, Steve Cochran, has some congratulations coming. He has been awarded the 2020 Mercer County Superintendent of the Year. So, our congratulations to you, Steve. You've been recognized as a leader in areas of student wellness and equity, and I note that your colleagues give you accolades for benefiting not only the Princeton Public Schools but influencing districts across the state. So, we're very happy for you, and you richly deserve this honor. And I want to let everyone know that there will be more details on how we plan to recognize Steve, who's leaving us unfortunately in a few short weeks, in the weeks to come. So, stay tuned. Steve, would you like to make your superintendent report, please?
Sure, absolutely. Well, I want to begin by acknowledging Dr. Galasso, who is with us tonight and will be talked about as a potential interim superintendent, and I just want to be among the first to congratulate and welcome you, Barry, to the district. I know you have amazing depth and breadth in your experience as a superintendent, and based on my homework, you are the kind of leader who is a relationship builder and someone who will be truly visible in our classrooms, in our community, and so I stand excited and ready to support you in any way that I can. Dr. Galasso will be taking the helm of a district that has a sustained focus on culturally responsive teaching, wellness and balance, and joy and purpose for all students and staff, and to help ensure a continuity of relationships and direction as our central office undergoes an exciting change in leadership. The Board has accepted my recommendation to consider appointing an acting assistant superintendent hired from within the district to step into the role of curriculum and instruction specialist that Annie will be leaving upon her retirement. So, we have a wealth of administrative talent within this district, and I look forward to recommending someone soon who can step into the acting role until a permanent superintendent is in place in Princeton. So, more on that to come. Beth, you had mentioned Teacher Appreciation Week, and this is Teacher Appreciation Week And if ever there was a year when what our teachers do, day in and day out, has been most visible and most valued, this is the year. We have never faced the crisis we are currently facing, and our teachers are approaching it with courage, creativity, immense compassion, and what I see is deep-seated professional commitment. So, I just, I want to offer my sincerest appreciation to our teachers tonight and also offer my thanks to all the parents and students who are taking time this week to do the same. Thank you all. Governor Murphy, yesterday, announced that New Jersey schools would remain closed through the end of the academic year. I know we all knew this was a possibility, but it still took a toll in hearing it in reality. I just, I want to acknowledge, as Beth did, the disappointment I think that all of us are feeling, staff and students alike, and not being able to come together in person before the end of June. Nevertheless, I'm grateful to Governor Murphy for making a decision based on what is best for the health of our students, our staff, and ultimately of our state. And it is with that health in mind that we are moving forward as a district with three phases of planning. First, we're planning for the celebration of this current year and the accomplishments of our kids. Second, we're going to be planning for the implementation of summer school. And third, and finally, we're planning for the safe reopening of our buildings in September for in-person instruction. So, based on the governor's announcement of yesterday, we will be completing this school year remotely. The last day of school for PPS will be June 16th, and the Princeton High School graduation will happen that day. PHS will have a virtual graduation. But mindful of how important this ceremony is to our students and their families, Principal Jessica Baxter and her team are putting in place plans for video that would show each senior physically walking across the stage to receive their diploma while wearing their cap and gown. So, we look forward to that event. Senior awards and Gold Key Ceremony will also both be virtual. We retain hope that other summer, senior celebrations could possibly happen later in the summer, but only if it's safe and restrictions are lifted. The John Witherspoon Moving On Ceremony, which has for decades traditionally been held in the Richardson Auditorium at Princeton University, is also scheduled to be a virtual event in June. We're looking forward to that event, as our JW community has already shown itself to be extraordinarily creative and flexible by, believe it or not, having grade-level dances on Zoom. So, shout out to our, I think our sixth graders have already been through the dancing, the seventh graders are coming up this week, and a shout out to DJ James for his help with that. The elementary school principals and the PTOs are also thinking about virtual approaches to the traditional fifth grade moving on ceremonies, and their goal is to celebrate with our students the relationships, the accomplishments, and the memories of those really amazing years in elementary school. So, we have all that planning going on, as well as planning for the logistics of getting students back if needed to pick up their belongings from their lockers, those sorts of things. So, we're working through the logistics associated with the celebration and the closeout of the current year. Summer school. Summer school for many, our many students who attend the Extended School Year Program, ESY, as well as our Stars Program, our LEAP Program, and our Jump Start Programs, will all be engaged virtually this summer. If there's an opportunity to bring some of those students into our building safely at the end of the summer to get them acclimated for the start of the year, we will certainly try to facilitate that. But at this point, we are planning for a virtual summer school experience. And then, the last question, what will happen when school starts again in September? PPS has established a reentry leadership team of nearly 30 administrators, teachers, support staff, two of our board members, who are considering this question. And we are viewing the answer through the lens of health, which we have categorized in three ways. First, we are prioritizing the physical health of our students and staff. So, will we need to be taking the temperatures of staff and students as they enter the building? Will they need to be wearing masks? What will our protocols for cleaning need to be? How will we maintain social distancing protocols on the bus, in the classroom, during recess? We have a subcommittee working on answering these questions and many others that are going to come up regarding the physical health of staff and students. Second, we are prioritizing the emotional health of our students. This crisis, as I think we are all aware, has been a trauma for many of us, for really all of us. We have all experienced and will continue to experience some level of fear, anxiety, and loss. And as students re-enter our schools, we want to assess their emotional wellness. We want to be in a position to support them individually and collectively, and we want to inspire them. Schools need to be places of hope and excitement, and we have another subcommittee that is charged with making that happen. So, you will be hearing more about that. And finally, we are prioritizing the educational health of our students. And as we know, while many have fared well during this period of remote learning, we know that others have struggled. We need to assess the gaps or losses in learning, and we need to have a plan to address them. So, we have yet another subcommittee that will be focused on this goal. The reopening of our schools in a climate of social distancing will pose significant and complex challenges. We are not likely to flip a switch in September and suddenly have 4,000 students and nearly 800 staff back in our buildings with learning happening as exactly as it was before the crisis began. We may have a phased reentry, such as in Denmark, where the younger children came in first, and the older students were home still doing their remote learning, and they came in later. We may follow the example of Quebec, who goes back to school next week, and their plan is to maintain smaller class sizes required for social distancing by having half the students in a class come in one day and then the other half come in the next. Regardless of the plan, it is likely that at least initially we'll have some hybrid of remote learning and in-person instruction. It is also clear that the new normal in the fall will be very different than the previous normal. Nevertheless, as we all adjust, I know and I hope we can hold on to the silver linings in our response to this crisis. Silver linings of flexibility and creativity, patience and partnership, silver linings of care and compassion, and grit and gratitude. I am focused on working with my colleagues, Dr. Galasso, and to create a reopening plan prior to my retirement, to the degree that I am able. And I continue to be grateful for a community that values joy and purpose and innovative solutions to complex problems. So, I am confident that we will get through this together as we have so far, and I just want to thank everyone for their continued effort.
Thank you, Steve.
I'm sorry, can I ask something?
Sure.
Sorry, Debbie.
Yep.
If, you know, things get better, would we be able to bring some of the summer school in in August?
Yes. So, that's my hope, actually, that we were able to start virtually, and then if things do get better, both in terms of our ability to move through the referendum projects and get the building all clean, and we have the health officials, local and state health officials say, yes, you can have, to a limited degree perhaps, you can bring students back, then I think that there are some students who would really benefit from getting into the buildings a bit early and getting some advanced learning, as well as, just as I was saying before, acclimated to a new setting. So, we're crossing our fingers on that, Debbie, and we hope for that. Yeah, thank you.
Right. Any other questions for Steve?
Is there any thought of moving back the start date of summer school? Because we know the problems that some of our kids are having is with the delivery that comes with remote learning. So, if there's a possibility that we will be, we will be able to have them in the school in August, maybe we could move the timing of summer school back.
Maybe. You know what? Let me, I hadn't really talked to, often talked to Annie and Valerie and Mickey about that, but I know we had actually moved up the start because we were trying to get the schools emptied so we could do some of the referendum projects. So, maybe we can look at pushing it back. I'll check with them on that.
Thank you. Thank you. So, that brings us to our next item, which is kind of a continuation of my remarks, and that is, I wanted to talk about it all at one time, and it is my great pleasure to announce that our interim search committee has met with success in our board. We've spent a lot of time with different candidates, and we're here tonight to take some action on Dr. Galasso, who Steve kindly introduced. And I just want to explain what we're doing tonight. The way it works is we come to an agreement on terms, and then those terms need to be approved by the county superintendent. And then, once the county superintendent agrees the form of contract, then it comes back to us, and we're able to appoint and approve and sign the contract. So, we're at the first step where we're about to send it to the county or formally send it to the county. So, that's the action that we're going to take in a moment. And I think first I'll let Betsy maybe make a few remarks and explain kind of our process. So, Betsy, go ahead, please.
Sure. So, I'll just take a moment to explain, as you said, the search process and tell you all a little bit about Dr. Galasso. So, on March 3rd, an ad hoc committee of the Board was approved to launch the interim search process. That was at a board meeting. The board members who joined me on this committee were Beth Baron, Debbie Bronfeld, Dan Dart, and Daphne Kendall. Together, we wrote the interim postings, started considering potential candidates, and reviewed resumes prior to scheduling interviews. We quickly realized the interviews would have to be done on Zoom, and we worked with Patty Gainer in the board office to schedule these remote interview sessions. The committee wrote two rounds of interview questions and planned the format for these interviews. So, the Board met a number of well-qualified educators throughout this process, and I really would like to thank the full Board for the time that they devoted to finding an interim superintendent. In addition, I heartily thank my board colleagues on the ad hoc committee for their time and valuable input, and we're incredibly thankful to Patty Gainer for her efforts as well. She was very helpful to us. So, from this point, the Board's attention now turns to the search for a permanent superintendent, and the first step will be looking into search firms and asking search firms to submit proposals to us, and we will start that process later this month. So, we're thrilled to have met Dr. Galasso, who brings decades of experience to this role. Most recently, he was the interim superintendent in Voorhees, but he spent 21 years as a superintendent in New Jersey in three different districts. His administrative experience includes every level of leadership, including department chair, assistant principal, supervisor, and principal. Upon his retirement, he was selected as the Executive Director of the New Jersey Association of School Administrators, representing all superintendents in the state. So, Dr. Galasso also has many years of experience as the Executive Director of the Bucks County Intermediate Unit in Pennsylvania, and in this capacity, he worked with 13 school districts and school boards, serving 100,000 public and private school students throughout the collaborative. He received a Doctorate of Education from Rutgers University and currently teaches school governance at the higher ed level. We're very pleased that he'll be joining us for six to 12 months until we've hired a permanent replacement for Steve Cochran, and we are very much looking forward to working with him and learning from him. Welcome, Dr. Galasso.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Galasso, I think we'll take our resolution and then ask Dr. Galasso perhaps to introduce himself to us, if that makes sense, that order. So, could I? Oh, and before we do the motion, Matt, would you like to clarify? There's a typo, I think, in the.
Yes. Working too quickly, the June, so we budgeted for a maximum of three days for four weeks for crossover, which I don't know if we're going to reach that, but there was a typo. So, it was $31,000. So, I've corrected it actually now on Board Docs, too. Maximum of $10,500 for 12 days at $875 a day.
Thank you. Thank you, Daphne, for pointing that out. So, could I have a motion for the resolution that the Board of Education would authorize the submission of a proposed interim superintendent contract with Dr. Barry J. Galasso to the executive county superintendent as required by law? Betsy? Second. Jess? Any discussion? All in favor? Can we have a roll call, please?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Stoich?
Yeah.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Ryan McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
She said yes, but she's on mute.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Yay!
Thank you. Dr. Galasso, we're so excited to work with you and really looking forward to getting, you know, we're, it's bittersweet because we're obviously going through a transition, but we're delighted that we found you. Would you be able to say a few words?
Sure. First of all, let me congratulate Steve on Superintendent of the Year. Being selected as Superintendent of the Year by your peers and being recognized for outstanding work is a tribute. It's a tribute to not only your work, but the school district. One of the things that impressed me with the Princeton School Board and all the research that I did prior to interviewing was the fact that Princeton School Board, the administration, faculty, and staff are all student-first people. They make decisions based on what's good for students, and when you do that, you really can't go far off the track. I've been impressed with the quality of questions that were asked. I looked at your test scores, your building facilities, quality of people that you hire, and naturally, your outstanding student body. So, I am really excited to work with all of you, particularly excited to work with Steve and transition over the next month or so, so that we can begin to have a quality 2021 school year. So, I look forward to working with you all. It's my pleasure and my honor, actually, to be part of the Princeton School Team. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's great. So, great way to start our meeting tonight. We really.
Yes.
Really appreciate it. Okay, and Dr. Galasso, at this point, should any moment you feel you want to drop off, we will not be offended, because we do meet a lot and we do meet long.
Okay, thank you.
Get your rest while you can. So, that brings us to the, to the public hearing on the budget. So, Matt, do you want to start us?
So, we were discussing offline before the meeting. I'm not going to go through the entire budget presentation. It was posted this week. I guess I make a formal, well, informal formal. So, the cover was changed from graduation, being that last week, we didn't know school was closed, and then it was closed yesterday. So, I just want to note that. But get to the meat of the matter. This budget is the same as was tabled last Tuesday. In that budget, we reduced our general fund tax levy by $253,626. So, we went from a 2.07% general fund tax levy to 1.75%. It won't help the average, quote-unquote, "average taxpayer tremendously," although we really felt, the Board felt it was very important to acknowledge this difficult time, you know, that the country is facing, the state, specifically this state, and the community as well. So, offsetting that, we have reduced our fund balance. We had $1,500,000 of appropriated fund balance in the budget, so that has been reduced for now. We have a strong feeling that the state will be amending its budget, thus reducing, potentially reducing our state aid. The governor has been officially given until August 25th to amend his budget message that he gave on February 25th. So, and we have a feeling he's going to take most of that time. Then it will go back to the legislators, so that would be his suggested budget, and then has to get voted on. The state has uniquely in this country, I believe still, it's the only one, I'm not sure, but that has extended the state's fiscal year an extra three months to try to capture, hopefully, an uptick once we sort of maybe get back to normal. I think it was a unique, a very unique idea, and so then next year would be shorter by three months with hopefully a rebounding economy to help sort of balance out the two fiscal years. So, we are beginning contingency planning now on various scenarios, whether the state maybe cuts a million or potentially 2 million or more of our state aid. The key factor as this comes out is what is the likelihood of that being a one-time event for fiscal '21 or recurring loss of state aid? That really will factor heavily into the decisions that we make as a school district and how we adjust. I want to pass it off to Brian, our finance chair, to see if he has any additional comments.
You're on mute, Brian.
It might be better that way.
I was okay with that, actually.
So, what's going to happen? I'll make some comments, and then the four other committee members will each have a chance to share their perspectives and make comments, and then our colleagues on the Board can ask questions and make comments, and we can continue that discussion. And after that, the public will have a chance to make comments, and then we would move to a vote. So, that's the process. Because this has been discussed, most of this has been discussed before, and I see we have a number of members of the public who have not been on some of the past meetings. I just want to kind of review a few things and take about four minutes, I think. So, first of all, I wanted to remind everybody that the budget process was very different this year. We started much earlier. Steve and Matt implemented a new priority-based process, and I really want to compliment Matt in particular for all of his work. It really has been extraordinary. And Steve, for embracing the notion of doing something differently, perhaps before he knew it was his last year. But I really think that the process was fantastic. It's a step. It's going to take a couple more years to make this work exactly the way we want, but it was an important step. The Finance Committee was actively engaged, which hasn't always been the case in past years. The budget was discussed at eight meetings, four pre-COVID and four post-COVID. And I want to compliment the committee members, Dan Dart, Debbie Bronfeld, Betsy Bagwell, and Beth Baron. It is the case that we dug deeply, we asked a lot of questions, and had vigorous and spirited discussions on many occasions. And for me, I really found that to be very gratifying. Anybody who thinks that there aren't independent thinkers who aren't going to question everything, you know, if you had been at some of those meetings and many of them were open, I think you would have been heartened by the work done by this group of people and the conviction they have to developing a very responsible budget. The full Board was more actively engaged. We had a budget workshop in February, a closed session in March where we discussed matters related to compensation. We had the full Board engaged last week and now tonight, so four board sessions in total. The result of the process was a balanced budget with no reductions enforced despite an ongoing structural deficit. And we achieved that by putting in And we achieved that by putting in place almost a million dollars of cost savings, including six hundred thousand dollars that we believe will be recurring savings. We changed our insurance broker, uh, look, analyzed, um, our prescription benefit plan and different options and made a significant change there, which, where we're projecting, um, very significant savings. Uh, Matt has become, begun tightening purchasing processes and increasing training around, um, purchasing, and we expect significant savings there. And, uh, third, this is the first year of a five-year transition to capital leasing for certain technology and other purchases. This will result in significant savings for, um, five consecutive years, at which time we'll return to steady state, and those savings will not be recurring. As we went through this process, um, you know, it was really two different processes, the pre-COVID process and the post-COVID process. And when we met after the COVID crisis began, there were three central questions that the Finance Committee focused on. The first related to balance. How do we balance the needs of our schoolchildren with the economic challenges that many members of our community are experiencing? The second was on the, the topic of uncertainty. How and when do we adapt our budget to reflect known and unknown changes of uncertain magnitudes? And the third had to do with our fund balance. How much fund balance can we use now? How much should we reserve for future use? And how much can we use and still be responsible fiduciaries? So it gets us to the recommendation. The recommendation, which was made, um, last week, um, and is being made again this week, and it's not a unanimous recommendation. Four committee members are in favor of this, um, are recommending that this budget be adopted, and one, um, uh, does not recommend that it be adopted, and everyone will get to speak. So the recommendation is that we view this as snapshot one. Approve the original budget, but with a reduction in the core tax levy from the original two-point-oh-seven percent to one-point-seven-five percent, as Matt noted, and also, as he noted, fund the two-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-six-dollar difference out of fund balance. Our rationale was it was a good process with a lot of transparency. We, one will not be the final result of this budget a year, but there is far too much uncertainty and too many unknowns to modify it until we have more information. The one-point-seven-five percent, which is the lowest core tax levy increase in memory, and certainly in the last decade, strikes the best balance we can achieve right now to sustain educational quality and deal with enormous uncertainty while understanding that these are very challenging times that have created many challenges for our community, including financial pressure on many taxpayers and residents. Should we approve this budget? The next steps, which we would begin immediately, are to prioritize and explore any and all material cost savings and revenue enhancement opportunities. We started this at our first meeting in January. Matt has worked on it. All committee members have offered suggestions. Matt, uh, at the May eighteenth meeting, will present, uh, a, a list of all of the opportunities for, uh, cost reduction and revenue enhancement with, um, his best assessment of, uh, the magnitudes of the potential savings and enhanced revenue. And then the committee will prioritize our work, uh, and Matt's work, um, to try to realize as many savings as possible. Whether we have reductions in aid or not, we are committed to saving, looking at every line and making sure that every, uh, dollar provided to us by our taxpayers is spent as wisely as possible. We will also ask the administration and the appropriate committees to attempt to quantify current-year savings from the school closures and potential twenty-twenty-to-twenty-one-year costs and savings. And as noted earlier by, uh, by Steve, we know that not all students are progressing at satisfactory rates during this time of remote learning, and you heard, uh, some of the potential, uh, ways we might address that, which likely would involve additional costs that are not currently contemplated in this budget. We will wait to hear from the state about any changes to aid, and ultimately, we'll be prepared to modify this budget potentially significantly when we have enough information to do so, most likely in late August or early September. I'll stop there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Would there, uh, other members of the committee that would like to speak first?
Sure, I will say something. So, um, I wasn't on finance last year, but I was happy to get on it this year to be able to really start digging, and we're not done. I want the community to know. I mean, believe me, I have a list of places we can go and things to look at, but we also need to share with our town. You know, I'm hoping the town will work with us in some of these, you know, and I'm hoping, um, you know, our staff and everything, because everybody has great ideas for cost savings. So I am happy that the process changed. It definitely took, and I said a lot of this last week, too, but it, it took a lot. It took a lot to, you know, kind of bring things up and to keep asking and to keep pushing, and for everybody to really realize that without a budget, we can't do anything. We really can't. And so I'm glad the process has changed some. I plan to keep pushing and pushing to make sure we really look at things. And, you know, we have to triple ask and triple work on projects because we need to keep the teachers in our room, in the classrooms, and that's where everything needs to be, and everything has to be for the kids. So I will continue to work on this budget and for the next year, but I am glad that we've had a better process than last year, because last year I was, you know, very angry with the whole thing. So it's gotten better. It's not a hundred percent where I think we need to be, but I'm excited for the work we have ahead of us to do on this and everything. So, that's all.
Good to see you, Dan.
I'll, I'll jump in and say I, and say what I said last week, which is that I'm, I'm very grateful to my colleagues for this collaboration, both within the Finance Committee and the full board. This is very much a compromise. As Brian said, we need to weigh the needs of our students with the needs of our entire community, and I'm very concerned about what this fall looks like for students who have struggled, uh, with remote learning, both special education students and general education students, and it's our responsibility as a Board of Education to support them. We don't know what those costs look like, um, but we know that there will be needs, and so I, I, I do also support this budget, and I appreciate the collaborative nature that we all use to get there.
Thank you. Dan, do you want to talk? You're on mute. You're on mute, Dan. Dan?
Thank you. So, thank you, and thank you, Matt and Brian. And just for a little history, when Brian and I were elected to the board, uh, there was a, a business administrator who had been here for many decades, and then we had an interim business administrator who was excellent, and they were, and then we were fortunate to, uh, hire Matt full-time, and he's done a great job in a really short time. And so the information we have for analysis and, uh, and discussion is vastly improved that, than that that we had before. And I think Brian's done a great job, uh, including, um, everybody and everybody's ideas on, on the committee. So we really, really appreciate that. You know, the, the, the world changed and with the pandemic. And, and first of all, the municipality went back and said, "We're gonna redo our budget, and we're gonna eliminate a tax increase." Princeton University took, uh, drastic steps, a salary freeze, eliminating non-essential spending. Rutgers and others have done that. It's a really, really challenging environment. So far, thirty million people have filed unemployment claims, about nine-hundred-thousand in New Jersey, and so the community, the county, the state and the country are suffering. And the thirty million doesn't count many people because, uh, state unemployment systems have been overwhelmed. And we'll see some employment data on Friday. The cost-cutting on industries have been directly affected is just incredible. Some of them are cutting costs thirty percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent, or closing down. And the airlines in particular, hotels, anything related to travel have been decimated. I very much want to adopt a budget tonight. I just want to adopt a budget that does not include a one-point-seven-five percent tax increase on the operating fund. We, we required to have a, uh, tax increase on the capital budget side, because we passed a twenty-seven-million-dollar referendum in December of eighteen, and we have to begin making payments on now, on that twenty-seven million. So if we adopt a, a one-point-seven-five percent increase, in effect, we're asking the, the citizens of Princeton to be at two tax increases, one on the operating side and one on the capital market side, and I think that's just, that's just too much. The dollar value, um, is approximately one-million-three-seventy, and think about one-point-seven-five percent. Now, in the corporate world, we thought of one-point-seven-five percent as, as a rounding error. I mean, when you, I mean, when you look at, again, what the companies are having to, to cut. So I think that without layoffs, I don't want to see layoffs, I don't want to see reductions in force. I don't want any student to be hurt. I don't want it to come out of academic programs, and I, and I believe that we can do that. I believe that from the bottom of my heart. For the past year and a half that I've been on the board, I've asked many questions, some of which remain unanswered today, about why our costs were much higher in certain categories. And we have many, many unexplored opportunities, not to cut costs, but to rationalize costs. We have many opportunities to, to, uh, to adopt best practices. Quite frankly, Princeton Public Schools has been spoiled, living in such a supportive and high socio-economic community, and has been late to this. So we're, we're really just getting started now, and I think we have a wonderful opportunity ahead. And so when the budget is, is, um, resolution is proposed, I will amend, offer an amendment to it to approve the budget without the general, uh, tax increase, the, of one-point-seven-five percent. Because I think there are, there are just many, many opportunities there. And the, there has, has been a lot of concern at the state and federal level about what the federal government, um, is, aid is gonna provide the states, and what in turn, what the state is going to provide, um, the local school districts. I will say, and, and, and Dr. Glaso had some great insights on this. The argument is really over the blue states' pension deficits, which have, which are enormous in Illinois, Connecticut, New Jersey, New York City, New York State, unfunded post-retirement healthcare costs. And these are really issues at the state level as opposed to at the local school district level. So I'm confident that in an election year, President Trump and Congress will provide money, and the amount of stimulus that they have provided so far is on the order of two-point-seven trillion, and they're not done. So I believe there'll be a battle and tension over whether the federal government should bail out pension, underfunded pension plans, but I believe we will, um, be able to move forward, um, and provide an excellent education that we've been known for in our, throughout our history. The second point I'm gonna make, and then I'll stop, is that we have benefited from high spending per, per pupil, right? We have the third-highest spending per pupil, say that three times, um, of ninety-seven school districts in our, in our peer group. Community members and others have shown that we're the highest budgetary cost per pupil of high-performing school districts. And when I looked recently in the State Department of Education, only Abbott districts were ahead of us and immediately below us. Now, that's both a problem, but it's also an opportunity. It's an opportunity to rationalize costs, to adopt best practices, to become more efficient without hurting the quality of education in our, in our school district. So I think we have a great opportunity, um, and we're blessed with, as I said, the third-highest per pupil spending, only two Abbott districts, number one and two, and just below us. We're far ahead of other high-performing school districts in, in, in New Jersey. That's both a problem and an opportunity. It just means that we can rationalize costs, become more efficient, adopt best practices without negatively impacting the kids. And I haven't seen, uh, I've taken a look at where this proposed one-point-three-seven million is going, and I don't see it directly benefiting the kids.
Thanks, Dan.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, Dan, so you, you say you want to pass a budget without a tax levy increase. So where would the money come from?
That's a good question. The, we have a lot of uncertainties. At the municipal level, they have strict budget categories with very limited, um, flexibility to move money between budget categories. We have much more flexibility at the school district side. I would say that, um, as a backup, and I hope we wouldn't need it, we have six-point-three million in fund balance. We have an unbudgeted CARES Act payment of two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand, and of course, we have a, a capital reserve budget, which is, uh, for something else. So my hope is that, as Debbie pointed out, after the budget is approved, that we can go to work so that we don't have to dig into that six-point-three-million-dollar fund balance, or, 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 uh, dig into it in a minor way, because I do think there are many unexplored opportunities.
Thanks, Dan. I'd just like to make a comment, if we're going in order, and, and since I'm on the Finance Committee. I agree with Dan that we're just getting started, um, but I'm in my third year on the board now, and I have to say again to, to the credit of Matt and to Steve and to our administrators that, um, we've been, we've been rebuilding this plane while we're flying it, and I'm so grateful that now, finally, in my third year, we have a little bit of a better look under the hood, and we can understand why we have a structural deficit, why it costs more to run this district than we bring in in revenues. Uh, we can now, thanks to Matt and to Dan's encouragement of having a more long-term planning, right? We talked, and when I ran for this board, too, I said we have to have, we can't just be going budget to budget. We have to look out ahead, and we have to look behind, and we have to understand where we've come from. And by doing that, I think we've gotten a much better perspective on our spending and on what's going on. And we know that we spent down fund balance to make up for the charter school expansion to a point where we were told by our interim administrator that, um, business administrator, that we were in a very dangerous spot. And we know that there was an act of God last year that gave us an additional extraordinary, uh, aid payment for special ed that allowed us to replenish our fund balance, brought us back to a point where we kind of had the boat on steady again, and we were able this year to create a pre-COVID budget that balanced, because we found some additional savings. Matt, you, you came up with a lot of great, great cost savings this last year, and it made a huge difference. So I feel like as a board and a community, we're much more literate in how our budget works. And it's for that reason that, now that COVID is with us, I'm very concerned about what's going to happen, and I think we're gonna have some major shocks later this year when we discover what the state budget is, because there's no money there. And it's for that reason that I feel really strongly about having to maintain the, the tax levy, because it's, it's, if you get, take away the revenue, y-you, you can't spend, and we need to spend to run the district. We're a hundred-million-dollar organization, we educate four thousand children, and as much as I am anticipating and looking forward to finding savings going forward, and there's a lot of really good ideas, and I, I'm really excited about that, we can't do it overnight, and we have to keep running the schools, and we're faced with this COVID crisis where we have children who are falling behind, and we have, for sure, we're gonna have unfunded mandates from the state to say, "How we go back? What does it mean? Do we have to invest in masks? Do we have to have different transportation? Does the space look different? We don't know what's coming. So I know this is not the budget that it's going to be in six months, but I want to make sure we have resiliency and we're ready, and we don't have to necessarily take extreme action with regard to our, our, our people or our resources if we get a big shock. We want to have enough money that we can adjust for a year or two and survive the jolt. So I'm, I'm very much in favor of what we're doing in this budget. I understand that our taxpayers are facing a tough year, and next year's probably going to be bad too. So we have, we don't have a lot of great choices, but I think as fiduciaries, we have to make sure we're ready to deal with whatever comes in the next couple of months, and I think this is, we're in a place where we have to, have to be right now. So I'm supportive of this budget. Would someone else like to speak? Yes, Michelle?
Well, I, I think that my colleague, Dan Doherty, made a lot of valid points in his statement, and I also don't agree with a lot of them. Last year, I voted against the budget because I thought it was balanced on the back of our most vulnerable citizens, our kids, with, who needed extra academic help. This year, as we've seen, the inequities that have been laid bare due to this virus have hit us square in the forehead. We are a school district that, we are feeding kids five days a week, we are feeding their families five days a week, or actually even, even more with the help of some of our generous citizens and nonprofits in town. And so, we're, we're not the municipal government, we are the school district. And for so many of our kids, we are the constant and stable presence in their life. And for so many of their, our kids, the socioeconomic status doesn't matter, we are the constant, stable presence in their life. I'm not thrilled about a tax increase, I don't care how minimal it is, because it, it certainly has the potential of negatively impacting kids and, and people in the town. But the one thing I will say is that if, if you're going to spend money anywhere in this town, it should be on education, it should be on ensuring stability in a very unstable time. We don't know what's going to happen, and Beth stole my line, I say it a little differently, it's like driving a car down the highway and changing tires at the same time. We don't know what's going to happen. And as fiduciaries, we need to be reasonably prepared that not only this year, but the next year, and perhaps even the next year, we're going to be against some really considerable challenges, both financially and socially, and in regard to public health. So while I think my colleague makes some good points, I'm going to have to disagree with how we move forward at this particular point in time. We, we have to be cautious, we have to be prepared, and we have to anticipate that things are going to get worse before they get better. And if we're not in a financial position to address that, I think we will have failed the people who need us most and depend on us most.
Thank you, Michelle. Does anyone else want to comment?
I just have a question. If we have 6.3 million dollars in fund balance, how, how are we operating at a structural deficit?
So the structural deficit really refers to balancing of recurring revenues versus recurring expenses. So, you know, we righted the ship until, you know, we kind of got hit by this, you know, pandemic. But so that, that, when the term structural deficit is used, it means that the, you know, rate of expenses is growing faster than our rate of recurring revenues. Fund balances, you know, can be used for one-time expenditures, but generally, you don't want to start using them for recurring expenses, such as hiring staff and benefits related to those staff.
Yeah, I would note that Matt's presentation back in February, and I think again, in the recent one, he noted that over the past five years, I believe, we've received enrollment adjustments that cumulatively total 3.7 million dollars. 3.9. And the intent of those is for us to, you know, pay for new costs associated with what has been significant growth in enrollments. That would typically be adding more teachers, adapting some of our space, with the growth of our special ed population, hiring more aides is appropriate. But what we've done is use those enrollment increases largely to fund the gap, and also to fund the 1.6 million dollars, you know, that's flowed to charter, which I think in this budget is up around 2 million, 2 million more than it had been. So we've basically used money intended for one purpose for, for a different purpose. And this is a good year to look at where we don't have an enrollment, you know, adjustment, we don't have a healthcare adjustment, we have a small enrollment adjustment. And even with the million, approximately a million dollars in savings, I think I'm rounding up, we're right on balance with no reductions in force. And I believe that is, every year going forward, if, if you just continue the trend, the trends that Matt has laid out, you know, in our, in, in, you know, the areas that are the biggest drivers of the budget, we would need to save 600,000 to a million dollars every year to keep it in balance.
And it doesn't include investments in, in the buildings or the facilities, which we neglected for many years, and have, you know, and, and we have a lot of maintenance that needs to be done, which we've begun to adjust a bit in budget this year, but we funded that for many years.
So I guess, I don't understand, so last year, the district received an additional 1.7 million in extraordinary aid, that was special ed costs, which are always cited for reasons why the budget goes up. So I, how is it that that money can be put in reserve, right, and not put back into special education?
Well, Matt, you could start.
So I like to, so the difference that you're citing, which is the actual budgeted around 750,000, anyway, last year was 748, but 750, and then the 2.4, so it, you know, the 1.7, but really, the average received prior was around 1.4, so it's an extra 1 million dollars. But we've, you know, that was abnormally high last year. So once again, we know, we just have to make sure our recurring revenues, so we've estimated, I actually spent a whole weekend, it was a lot of fun, I actually enjoy it, but I'm being half sarcastic, calculating what we think it will be this year, which now actually is open. Mickey and I, the special ed student services director, Mickey Chrisifulli, will start working on that next week, but we estimate that to be around 1 to 3/4 million dollars. So, so it, it's really just a question of recurring revenues, recurring expenses, and then, you know, each year, as I've kind of tried to lay out, you know, we're not here to, to build up a war chest of fund balance, we're here to educate children. So we want to shoot for as break even, as close to break even as possible, and spend the most we can spend on educating our students.
Yeah, I mean, it gets a little complicated, but the, that aid was reimbursement for expenses we had already made. And so when it came after the fact, essentially, it, it meant that, you know, the year went better than we had expected, and it raised fund balance, and the interim business administrator, you know, shared with us the different options, you know, for the, the funds, and strongly recommended that we add a bit to maintenance reserve, and also to our fund balance, and our, you know, he opined that our fund balances was, on a percentage basis, among the lowest he had ever seen or heard of in the state. And now, you know, it's up a little, but, you know, based on the work Matt has done, we're still pretty low compared to, we're the lowest of the surrounding communities. And if you look at our, our peer group, while there are one or two that, you know, have percentages that are below ours, the majority of districts that Matt has looked at have higher amounts of fund balance, you know, which is used to manage cash flow. Should there be any drop off in tax levy collections, and should the state make a decision that the municipality, which is responsible for the collections, could prorate that, you know, so that we would get our, you know, the prorated share, not 100%, which is what we get now, and the county as well, we would need some of that fund balance to manage cash flow. And then, as, you know, everybody's noted, if we have a reduction in state aid or significant increased costs, and we have no revenue that comes with it, we're going to have to look to the fund balance to be the shock absorber, and, and look at other things as well. In terms of the municipal budget, it's, ours has some significant differences. The municipal budget is quite a bit smaller, only 55% of their revenue comes from the tax levy, they have a 16.8 million dollar surplus, and they use about 7 million dollars of that most years, they're using a little bit more this year, which is one of the key tools they've used to balance a budget that, that includes no reductions in force and no reduction in services. And they also generate on the order of 7 million dollars of surplus a year. So it's, it's just, it's not apples and, and oranges, but they're definitely different flavors of apples.
So I just would comment that ultimately, we depend on the public for their support. And, and during a period of time when the pandemic is manifesting itself, you know, to ask for two tax increases is a lot. If we were to not use our cap, for example, on the operating budget side, under the law, it is banked, and we would then have three years to, to use it. And, and, you know, a year from next year's budget will coincide with the repayment of debt, our, a substantial amount of our referendum bond debt will be repaid February 1st of 2022. Another portion, another debt referendum, February 1st of 2023. And, and that will relieve some pressure overall, when you look at our combined budgets and the tax levy. So we don't, we don't lose anything legally, but I think it would show the community that, you know, that this is important. And, and then a year from now, when we were looking at the repayment of debt and the elimination of a major part of the capital budget, we'd be in a much better position if we needed to use that cap. So we don't lose anything, we don't, the cap doesn't go away, it's not a one, you know, it gets banked for three years. And I just think the, the, I understand all the concerns that everybody has expressed, understand them completely. But I think that we have a lot to work with, and I'm confident that with the talent that we have, we can work through this without burdening our taxpayers further.
Thank you. Are there any, is there any other board comment before we go to the public?
One, one comment. We, we have often talked about our budget as a statement of our values, and I just want to highlight for the board and the community, the, the focus that this budget has maintained on, on equity, on, on health and wellness for our students, on facility stewardship and fiscal stewardship. We talk about priority-based budgeting, and we certainly put equity as a priority in our pre-COVID budget, and I, I'm glad that I'm hearing the board continuing to talk about equity as a priority in our post-COVID budget. So in our pre-COVID budget, we, we, as, as has been said, we didn't have any reduction in force, we added only two positions, even as our enrollment went up, but we moved things around to the point where we were able to add two achievement coaches to work at our elementary school, to help with tier one, tier two, tier three supports in the classroom for our students who need those the most. We added an additional accelerated intervention teacher, we had cut some of those positions last year, we added one back. We were able to add a halftime teacher for ESL services at the, at the high school, as well as a special, a halftime special education teacher at the high school. We added in a new full-time family liaison position at JW Middle School, where our enrollment is going from 780 to 850 next year, and where we really need that. So we now, we went from 2.6 family liaisons in the district currently to 3.6. And so we're really advancing in that area. And so I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm really pleased with the, the shifts in our use of personnel to achieve our, our priorities. And as we think about our post-COVID world, I heard a number of you talk about the uncertainties, and I think we all share that, that concern. And, and yet, when we look at remote learning and the impact of that, there's a disproportionate impact on, on many of our students. And it's a disproportionate impact educationally, as I talked about earlier in my comments, and there's going to be a need to, to remedy that, and there will be expenses associated with that, there will be, there's a disproportionate impact to some degree in the social emotional world, and the, we are going to be investing in the support of our students and staff in that very important area. And then, of course, there's going to be an impact on the, the physical protocols and, and equipment that we're going to have to put into place to protect our, our children and to keep them safe. So I appreciate that the board is looking at the economic impact in our community of the COVID crisis, and lowering the amount that we're asking for the community, but I also appreciate that the board is trying to retain enough funds within the budget to be able to respond to the, as of yet undetermined costs and expenses that we are going to need in order to maintain our commitment and our priority that we're placing on, on equity.
I just want to, and I think that's great, thank, thank you, Steve, I just want to make the comment that all the board is united in its commitment to student wellness and health, and no child left behind, and, and equity. And, and many of us, and I cite Debbie Bronfield, who's spent a lot of time on the mobile food pantry, and, and we've all stepped up and donated personal funds or time. And, and so there is no, we, we, we totally support the mission of the school and the, and the commitment of putting students first. But it's a delicate balance, and it's not one that's always obvious.
Thank you, Dan. Does anyone else want to have any, any more comments or questions from the board before we go to the public? If not, Matt, do you want to open the public comment?
Yes, so just raise your hand, I see that we have one speaker so far, I'm going to
Just remind our speakers, if you could state your name and address, and also try to keep your comments to three minutes, we would appreciate that. I think I see Kip, is it Kip that's going to speak?
Yep. Thank you. I want to congratulate you on bringing in an interim superintendent quickly, as you did, I think that's very good. I want to mention that I think that the budget is overly rosy in terms of the assumption on the revenues, and I know that you are aware of that, but yet you still haven't really modified on that. The revenues go from 97 million two years ago to 106 million now in your proposed budget, which is a big increase, that's 9%. And I know that you appreciate the fact that probably stated will be cut, and also tax receipts will probably be down, but I would have liked it if you'd had made a little effort to try to quantify that, and I know it's very difficult, but it's going to, it's going to hit us. And I know it's very difficult, but it's gonna, it's gonna hit us. I'd also like to see a debrief on remote learning and substantial debrief to hear from the students and from their parents how it went and what improvements they feel can be made in it. I think when we talk about struggling students, we should also say struggling parents. I think the parents have been through a tremendous struggle and they need support too and how to be better. Not at teaching their kids necessarily because they don't replace teachers, but they tried and they, they had real challenges doing that because that's not the role that the kids see them in. So I am very concerned that we may be returning to remote learning for a period of time in the late fall. We're going to be, I think, slammed again by COVID. And so I don't think we're done with this. I don't think we're on our way out. We are now in a lull and I think we're going to get hit again. And so I think you've got to be realistic about that possibility. I'm also concerned about the $350,000, $253,000 not being specified as to what those reductions might be. And then finally, I'd like to mention the $1.5 million line item that I'm concerned about, which involves the capital reserves. I don't feel that's necessarily all well thought out either. And I would also like to see a debrief on the cost overruns related to the referendum. So I think that the summertime could be a great opportunity for some public meetings and for gathering opinions from the community about these things so that we're a bunch better prepared in the fall to, to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kip. Is there anyone else?
Any other in the public? Just raise your hand and I'll, I'll unmute you.
Okay.
See anyone raising their hand? Does anyone else? You guys can see the same thing. I believe I can.
Matt, does everybody know where to click to raise their hand?
Yeah, it's down in the bottom of the screen there. It's pretty apparent for attendees.
Okay, we don't have that. I assume if you took your cursor and you move your cursor down to the bottom of the screen, it will appear. Okay.
One of the nice things about Zoom, it's very intuitive. I don't see anyone else. What?
There's a comment from Christina Donovan.
There was a couple of comments while we were, but we weren't open to the public. I think they were, Christina is guidance director.
Supervisor of school counseling. Yep.
Sorry.
Okay. If there are no further comments, are we ready to move to the vote? Yes. Can I have a motion, please, for the adoption of the budget 2021?
So moved.
Brian, second?
Give me one second. I gotta get there. Hold on.
Okay.
A lot of screen. Okay, Brian, I got a motion. Okay, go ahead.
For the budget. Peter? Is there any discussion? Being done, can I ask for a roll call, please?
Yes. Beth Baron?
Yes.
W. Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart? Are you muted? Dan? You're muted.
You're muted. Dan?
I think he's having trouble getting off mute.
Thank you. No.
Jess Deutsch.
This is frozen.
Oh, she's frozen.
That was a yes. Betsy Calber Bagvia?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphna Kendall?
You're muted, Daphna.
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
All right. So the budget is adopted, nine yes and one no.
Thank you. That brings us to the next public forum on agenda and non-agenda items. If anyone wants to speak from the public. Again, move your cursor to the, probably take your cursor and bring it to the bottom right of your screen and you should see a raise your hand emoji. Oh.
Christina is, do you want me to unmute you now? Okay, we have two people raising their hand. Great.
Yeah.
Let's see. Hold on. So Felicia Spitz? You should be live, Felicia.
Can you hear me?
We, we can. A little light on the volume, if you could raise it maybe a touch.
How about now?
That's good.
Okay, great. I just wanted to ask if the list that's posted on the agenda of the personnel is the final list that's getting voted on?
Or is Mike is here somewhere? But yes, to my knowledge. Oh, Mike dropped off.
No, Mike's here.
Oh, here. Yes.
Oh, there you are, Mike.
We're, we're, we're actually, I just need to say we're in public comment session. We're not Q and A. We just need to, you know, we will listen and hear what you have to say and we appreciate your comments, but we're not really able to necessarily back and forth. Thank you.
Hold on. Deana Shaw, I'm gonna unmute you now. Hi, Deana.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
And we can.
Okay, so this is Deana Shaw, 185 Clover Lane. And I hope I'm in the right segment. If I'm not, Beth, just say different segment. But I'm coming on because I wish I could do this in person. First, I want to say congratulations, Steve, and I wish you all the best wherever you head. And I did work with you a little bit and get to know you a bit. And we were lucky to have you in our district. But I put together something to read for Annie Kosick because Annie and I worked together a lot. And she was very important to my family for many, many years. You can already hear it in my voice. Sorry. But um, I want to take this opportunity, thank you, Annie, for many years of leadership at Littlebrook and Princeton Public Schools. I had the great pleasure of being a parent at Littlebrook. And for many years, all three of my children attended. I think I was there for like nine years. You had an amazing ability to listen, to absorb and to guide. I went to you on many occasions for all sorts of guidance, whether it was to help my children or to help me understand how to help my children. You remember all those times, Annie? Came to talk. You knew how to make a worried parent feel better and to allay their fears. You guided many of us. You made learning fun and you made Littlebrook safe for parents, children and teachers alike. My children loved learning while in your care. Your smart, your warm smile and caring style always made it so children wanted to go to school. I remember your amazing birthday lunches where you gave children books. My children absolutely loved those special moments in your office where they got to talk to you, share their experiences and then leave with a wonderful book. What more could a parent want than an opportunity for their children to want to read? And of course, those were my children's favorite books. And then to the, all the attention you gave our school. You were the leader of our Halloween parades and you always attended the PTO functions happily. How many pancake breakfasts did you stand and make character shaped pancakes for endless number of children? And at the pasta dinner dipping the pretzels in the chocolate and the sprinkles so the kids could get a treat directly from their principal? Your tireless energy and your amazing presence was always welcome. You were there for the parents, you were there for the students and you were there for the teachers. And I know this from having worked with you for many years on the PTO. Whether it was taking us paperless and working against and up against the stream, we became groundbreakers that year in Princeton Public Schools. And I know it wasn't easy because we were trying to do something that was, hadn't been done before. But it helped the communication. It made our school more cohesive. And I always appreciated your ability to look ahead and to keep us moving forward. And then when it came to the after-school programs, wow, what an impact that has made. I think they're up to 27 of them. And that was also a big leap of faith. So thanks to you and your ability to work with all of our, the eager members of our community on so many fronts. There's so much more I could talk about, but I just want to say thank you. You taught me so much about being a parent. You taught my children to love learning. Excuse me. Good thing you can't see me. And you helped build Littlebrook into the award-winning school it has become. Our community has been enriched by having you in it and you will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Deana.
Thank you, Deana. To Deana. Deana, thank you so much. And I hope we have an opportunity to get a goodbye hug in before, before July 1.
Me too. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Deana.
All right. The next person is Christina Dobbin. Donovan, I'm going to unmute you right now.
Such a sad.
Go ahead, Christina.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so I would be remiss if I didn't talk about how the fact that all of our teachers, our administrators, everyone is really focusing on the social, emotional and health of our kids. So I have been tasked with the reentry plan for everyone. And all I can think about is how important it is to have a fiscal framework, but also putting kids first. That is the most important thing to us. I would be remiss if I didn't say that our entire administrative team, and that means Steve and Annie and all of our principals are not completely committed to ensuring that we have equity and at the same time, a social, emotional framework to ensure that our children are okay coming back. This is hard. No one has a framework or a, you know, plan for a global pandemic of this nature. And that's the part that I think we all have to understand. You know, we just want to make sure that everybody understands that we promise, we understand we need to ensure the wellness, the care, the love of our kids in this district. And that means every single aspect. Oh, in my, at this moment, my seventh grader is about to come downstairs and say, do I have to get off of the internet? So, you know, yes. And also, how do we make sure that we're connecting with kids and we're making sure that they still have their friend groups and everything is safe? And we are ensuring academic excellence and everything else? So, you know, I wish I had all the answers for you right now. And I love the fact that, you know, my, my doctorate in counselor education and supervision should probably say I have all those answers. But this is a whole new world. And so I feel like we all need to band together and again, ensure that we are working together to work on academic excellence, social, emotional wellness, and making sure that no child is left behind. And so that's it. You guys, most of you know me and you know I love kids. So the most important thing to me here is that we're putting them first.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, Christina.
Thanks, Christina.
Okay. Any more comments? If none, then I think we can move on to our committee reports that we delayed from last week. So maybe we could go through those quickly and if we can keep them brief, that would be good. But it's important to get an update because we haven't heard from committees in about, in a month. So could we start with equity? Michelle?
Absolutely. Equity met on April 13th, virtually, of course. And the majority of our meeting was spent on soliciting feedback from community members about how they felt the community was managing through the coronavirus. So we heard a lot of comments about food delivery. We heard comments about the experience of our special education students and students with IEPs and the challenges that the students were having and the parents were having. We talked about attendance, challenges of certain students in our community. And we also talked about fulfilling technology needs. And those were some of the topics that, that were discussed. And Steve and Annie were there and they were able to respond to many, many of the concerns and observations. And we got ideas and input on a lot of resources in the community. So thanks to everybody who attended. We also had a report on the work of the Equity Impact Statement Subcommittee, which was convened at our March meeting. And that committee is working to talk about or try to frame out an equity impact statement policy or what would be something that's right size for our Princeton community. And we came up with three components of desired outcomes for an EIS policy. One would be that it would involve inclusive decision-making. Two, that it would include impact assessment. And three, it would have tools to measure the impact of such a policy. So the committee is going to be reaching out to school districts that have implemented or at least planned such a policy. Our next meeting of the Equity Committee is on May 11th at 7:00 PM, of course, virtually. And we will actually have our Equity Consultant, Marceline Du Bois, who will facilitate our discussion. Marceline was deeply involved in Minneapolis's development of an equity impact framework for that city. So that's what's happening.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for Michelle? If not, then we go to facilities. Susan?
Hi, we had our first open session facility meeting on Zoom on April 20th. We discussed some of the ongoing projects in the district. The transformers are still scheduled to be worked on over the next couple of weeks. Due to COVID, there were a couple of delays and we are still waiting to hear the final installation dates. The work has continued on JW, in the, for the, in the ACC suite and in the health suite. We have not, Dave Harding has not allowed work to happen that would be intrusive in the building, especially at the time. We did not know if students were going to be back into the building in this calendar year. And he will now begin to work with the contractor to see if there's any non-invasive steps that they could start working on that will ensure that the schools will be ready for our hopeful September opening to receive students. The PHS bid is currently out and is due back on May 15th. We've had a significant number of requested documents, but will, and so there seems to be good interest. But that, we'll, we'll still have to see how the bids come in. And that will be something that our next facilities committee meetings will start discussing. And if we can, if there's a bid to be accepted and what alternates will be included in that bid. We discussed how Dave and Matt are having discussions to pack up the classrooms on all the schools where the work is going to be done. Even though now we will not have teachers and students back for educational purposes. We still want to ensure that everything is done in a safe and healthy manner. And they're working on the best procedures to allow that to happen. And then Dave also presented on safety and maintenance and potential cost savings that we may be able to incur with the buildings being closed and how he can continue to investigate energy-saving projects like the LED lightning, lighting, even though we're in a COVID world and not let those projects be delayed. So our next meeting is going to be on May 12th at 8:30 in the morning.
Thank you. Can I just ask that everyone on this call, please mute yourself if you're not speaking because somebody is giving us background noise? Betsy, did you have a question?
I have a question for Susan. Have you thought on facilities? Are there ways that parents or PTOs generally can help with this? Certainly, we couldn't have many people together in a school, but as far as cleaning out or boxing up classrooms, if there are ways parents can get involved, I think we might have a great deal of parents who would offer to help us.
Yeah, if we're aware of that, obviously in a COVID world now, this becomes a little more difficult with social distancing and trying to, you know, maintain the safety in each of the classrooms and also having discussions with teachers in terms of how they, you know, one, are we going to allow teachers very safely into the buildings to pick up more of their supplies? And then discuss the best way to do this packing. So Matt and Dave are definitely moving forward. We know parents have expressed that interest, but, you know, keeping, we've also discussed how you don't want too many people in the building in this world. So I think we're going to have to find that right balance to keep both the workers who are doing the projects and anyone that's our own staff healthy during these times. But yes, it is, it is definitely on. these times. But yes, it is, it is definitely on the list of what we've discussed.
Thank you, Susan. Any other questions for Susan? If not, then we'll go to finance. Brian?
I'm sure I'll be very brief since most of what we've talked about in our meetings, we just talked about, you know, it was all about the budget. We met on April 20th, April 27th. And we had an ad hoc meeting yesterday, May 4th. All of the conversation has been on, you know, the budget and trying to get a sense of what the post-COVID budget might look like. There are an awful lot of moving parts. And as I also noted earlier, we're going to be spending a lot of time looking at any options to find meaningful cost savings. And we'll probably need to connect with some of the other committees, especially student achievement, because some of the cost-saving ideas, you know, are well beyond the, the finance committee's purview. But that's been our focus. The group has been incredibly engaged and we are delighted to have Matt.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian? Debbie, do you want to go with personnel, please?
Of course. The Personnel Committee met three times in the last two weeks, Thursday, April 23rd, Wednesday, April 29th, and Monday, May 4th, to review all non-tenure staff in all six schools in the administration office. This was the first year the new format was used to review our non-tenured staff. The new format offered more valuable visibility into the work our staff is doing. Over the three days, the supervisors and principals shared their thoughts and reviews of their staff. There was a lot of discussion on our non-tenure staff. Tonight, the board will be approving all tenure, non-tenure personnel. The Green and Wellness Committee met last month on Thursday, April 16th. The group discussed starting work in all the gardens. Some gardens are in the interior of the building, so people had to reach out to principals and custodians, and this still needs to be scheduled. The committee also talked about what types of wellness activities were taking place remotely at many of the schools. The committee talked about green and wellness and current curriculum and other ways to unify the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Questions? Then we're on to policy. Jess?
Thank you. Yes. Policy met by Zoom on April 16th at 8:00 AM. We continued our process of policy conversion to the NJSLA manual. The committee agreed to put forward, as we did, the remaining group of 6,000 for second reading at our, which we did at our last board meeting. Holding back policies, we wanted to get further input on before proceeding. The committee agreed to put those policies that are pending further review into a tracking sheet and to create a separate list of those that are approved, but that we wish to revisit and refine with additional input. The tracking sheets are available for the full board to view so that any board member knows the status of policies we're actively working on. Thanks to Susan Cantor for agreeing to take the lead on maintaining that tool. And if I could just ask, Michelle, with the information that you spoke about related to the statement and the development of a policy on equity, if you would share that with the policy committee, we can, we can enter that into the, that tracking sheet, even in its preliminary form, so that we can start to look at it.
Absolutely. Happy to do so.
Thank you. The committee also reviewed our policy 5145.7 transgender and gender non-conforming students. Thanks to a really thoughtful, rigorous edit by Daphna Kendall, we've now crafted a policy that addresses our board's emphasis on a safe, supportive, and inclusive learning environment to ensure that every student has equal educational opportunities and equal access to the district's educational programs and activities. Thank you, Daphna, for that. And we encourage the board to, to look at that policy really carefully because it really does reflect our values and our emphasis on equity, every child known, caring and connection. That policy also includes a list of resources for educators and parents, which we recommend be posted on the district website under Resources for Wellbeing. And the committee will meet again on May 14th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, that brings us to SAC, Student Achievement. Betsy?
Great. Thank you. We've been busy in student achievement. We met twice on the Zoom platform. We were open to the public Friday, April 17th, and Friday, May 1st at 11:30 AM. The first part of the meeting was open to the public, as I said, in, at those meetings in attendance, were Debbie Bronfeld, Dan Dart, Susan Cantor, Daphna Kendall and I. We also had a closed session meeting, a student achievement meeting, a discussion with special education parents on April 30th at 1:00 PM. Our administrators and special education supervisors joined us for that conversation as well. So as far as the, the meetings that were open to the public, we start these meetings with a remote learning update. It will be an ongoing topic for us. We're hearing about how it's going, but to Kip's point that she made earlier, we're starting to think about what lessons are we learning, about what is working and what is not working in remote learning, and how these lessons will impact education in our district in the future. Annie also recently sent out a survey to parents. And I'm, I'm sure in student achievement, we'll hear about those results, but I think making that public to our community as well, posting some of that on the website would be great. So let me just tell you briefly what we spoke about. Annie Kosik was joined April 17th by Jessica Baxter, Jason Burr, Beth Murrin, Crystal Riddick, and Eric Zolak to update the committee on remote learning. And on May 4th, Jessica and Jason returned, as well as Brian Dubinsky, to discuss remote coaching and advising as well. Much of these conversations focused on connection and care for our students, and I'll share some highlights. We've talked about student engagement, flexibility in grading. Annie's, as Annie has said, we cannot recreate school at home, so assessment and grading will be different. Jessica and Jason shared their plans, which had been communicated to students and families. Annie shared attendance rates and noticed ways in which staff members are reaching out to students who are not engaging. We discussed the expansion of the MAP program, which include loaning, included loaning of devices to families in the district who simply needed an additional one in order for the family to work at the same time. We've talked about homework levels and what is working for some families, is not working for others, and flexibility within that. Our special education supervisors also shared flexibility has been the key there. They're starting to assign instructional aids to assist families and students. They, everyone acknowledges that the scheduling is difficult, but we're learning as we go. And, and they shared that Zoom IEPs have been conducted, the IEPs have been conducted that way and they're going very well. We talked about the connection for students through their coaches and their club advisors and how important this is for our students. And also the scheduling, as, as Steve spoke about at the beginning of the meeting, of some virtual celebratory events. And now that we know school has, is closed through June 30th, and we're continuing remotely, those plans will adapt. So we will begin each student achievement meeting with an update on remote learning. That will continue in the work ahead. The Student Achievement Committee thanks each and every one of our staff members who provide support and care to our students at this time. It is noticed and it is appreciated. We had a calendar discussion on April 17th. Not, nothing is on our agenda yet, but may appear before the board later this month. One is for this year's calendar. Primary day has been delayed until July. If the district, we're still determining whether or not we will take a professional development day on June 2nd. Otherwise, that may shift to another day in June. And also, I'd like to have a first reading of the 2122 calendar. It feels really like the future, but I'd like to have that on in May and we'll do a second read then for the board in June. At this last meeting on May 1st, the NJSLA Science Data was shared by Annie Kosik and Maridh LaBide. The committee appreciated the detailed presentation and really looks forward to future discussion. This, this discussion showed a clear achievement gap that still is, exists in our public schools. It's evident in other areas, as we've seen. Annie has shared some data with us for standardized tests. It was evident on these, on the science data as well. The Student Achievement Committee is committed to supporting the needs of all of our students, and we will come back to this topic in June to create a plan moving forward to really address this gap. School performance reports for individual schools have been posted to the district website. Annie also provided updates on some ongoing topics that have been suggested by members, members of the committee and members of the public. And at each meeting, the committee adjourned into closed session after public comment. So our next student achievement meeting will be on Zoom on Friday, May 15th. The meeting begins at 11:30 and the first hour is open to the public. We invite you all to attend. The Zoom meeting details will be in the, on the agenda, which is attached to the calendar item at some point before May 15th. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Are there any questions? I would just ask that maybe to Betsy and Steve, if the full board could get an update on the remote learning, I think it would be helpful, just because obviously we don't all benefit from the student achievement meetings.
Great.
Thank you. So that brings us to our personnel agenda. Item K. So what I will do is, I think most of these are consent items. I will read them. And if there are questions, you can interrupt me as usual. Otherwise, I will work my way through and we will get to the consent. Does that make sense? Okay, so first item K1, appointment. The, the appointment schedule, these are all attached. Item K2, resignations. Item K3, personnel items. Item 4, leave of absence. Item 5, six-period compensation. Item 6, non-tenured reappointments. Item 7, tenured reappointments. Item 8, PAA, tenured reappointments. Item 9, PREA, non-tenured reappointments. Item 10, PRESA reappointments. Item 11, unaffiliated reappointments. Item 12, tenure 2021.
I just have something to say. First of all, to our teachers, I think yesterday was National Teacher Appreciation Day. Thank you to our teachers for everything they're doing. Teachers are heroes, right along with our doctors and nurses and first responders. I think if anyone doubted the value of a teacher, they've all learned very quickly how much our teachers do. And I just wanted to say on the tenure list, my children had several of these teachers, so I just wanted to say congratulations to, and well deserved, to Christina Vina, Sarah Ayed, Julie DiSapio, Ryan Galanitis, Kristen Hill, Joshery, I can't read my handwriting, Joshery, where'd you go? Conchi, sorry, Joe Lanzetta, and Keith McAvoy. So well deserved.
Thank you, Daphna. Our congratulations to all of our staff who are being reappointed and being given tenure and who remain with us and are working their, their hearts out for our kids. Thank you all. So item L is the, oh, I think it's a annual school district audit. This is a corrective action plan. Matt, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, so we had, so the state reached out to us this morning, I believe. So our corrective action plan wording in the resolution, which has probably been the same for over a decade, was flagged. We made a slight correct, I made a slight correction of rewording it, and they accepted it. And this is just really a verbiage thing on the resolution. You know, technically, I believe after reading it, they, they were correct. So we made the, just a slight verbiage on, on how the board accepts the corrective action plan.
So there's no substantive change to this? It's just a language issue?
Yeah, it's just more directly, I mean, the language, yeah, more directly approves, yes, just semantics.
Any questions? All right. Next item is the contract award 2021 aftercare services to the YMCA.
I had a question.
Yes? Oh, you're muted. You're muted.
I, I kicked myself out of Board Doc, so I was trying to get myself back in. But before we move on any further, I just want to give a kudos to the, to Mike and the HR department on, on the presentation for all the tenured, non-tenured, and all the, the paperwork that they had to compile and, and present to us so that we could make or actually review all the performance reviews of all these staff people. It's an enormous task. And I remember last year on Mike's second day, I turned around and I look, and I know you remember, Mike, because you probably thought, oh, my God, I have to actually work with this woman. She is hellish. But I looked at him instead. This better not look like this next year. And it didn't. So thank you, Mike. Thanks, your team. You did a great job. Really appreciate it. But I really had to say that because I was so awful last year and I want to redeem myself. So thanks a lot.
Thank you, Michelle.
Can I just add a, a note to that? It's my first time on the personnel committee and I have only the highest praise for, you know, the process, the thoroughness. And in addition to thanking Mike and his team, I wanted to thank Debbie, who I know has been pushing very hard for some time to make the processes as good as it is. And I know she'll keep pushing to, to keep it, until it's a little, even a little better.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Thanks, Debbie. Okay. So I think we're on the item L2, L3 now, acceptance of donation. Wait.
Can I, can I just speak to L2?
Yes.
I just want to commend Steve and Matt for bringing together a team to do an RFP, to reach out, to look at our aftercare programs. This is a change for us and it, it means that all four schools will be offered the services of the YMCA as an aftercare program. This will have an academic component to it as well this year. There'll be homework assistance offered as part of this. And, and to achieve consistency among our schools and know our students are engaging in the same program is great. And I just want to say, as part of that RFP process, it was really well done and I appreciate Matt for running it and Steve for initiating this this year.
Thank you, Betsy. Thank you. And the next item is acceptance of a donation from the Chinese community of Princeton in the amount of $3,433.29 to be used for the children of the free and reduced lunch program for the purchase of face masks and other items needed for these children during the COVID-19 pandemic. The Board of Education acknowledges and offers appreciation and thanks for this generous donation. Steve, did you want to add anything? I know they've given a lot more than, this is just the, the last little bit. This group has been so generous.
They, they really have. This, this community from the very start of the COVID crisis has been a source of, of support to the entire community in providing PPE and, and other kinds of needs. And so the, the school district was the recipient of their generosity, focused on some of our most vulnerable students and their families, and we're incredibly grateful for that.
Thank you. And then the next item, again, L4 is another really generous donation. This one, we are authorizing acceptance of a donation from the, pardon my pronunciation, the Chinese School of Plainsboro, HXRCS, and the Central Jersey Chinese American Association for 1,000 protective masks for safety of school staff who are working in school facilities during the COVID-19 pandemic. Another generous donation. It's wonderful. Thank you. And another donation of, we are authorizing the acceptance of a donation from IFF for sanitizer for staff who are working in school facilities during COVID, estimated cost of $100. Thank you for that. So that brings us to our consent approval. Can I have a motion? Brian, second. Michelle, any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Dan? You're on mute, Dan.
Yes, yes, yes.
Beth Deutsch?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Parkponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphna Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to our final public comment session. Is there anyone who wants to comment?
So once again, just raise your hands if you're out there, if you want to speak about anything. Going once? I don't see anybody, Beth.
Then we're almost done. I just want to add as maybe not new business, but things we hadn't mentioned that we wanted to talk about just briefly. One is, Daphna and Susan, you've updated us internally on your participation on the reentry process, the committee. I, I never get the name right. What is it called?
Reentry Leadership Team.
Yeah. So is there anything else you want to say publicly or we just go with the preliminary update? We appreciate that. Okay. And the other thing I wanted to say on the planning, just to come back to our, our work with, with M&amp;M. We haven't talked about that in a while. And obviously, there's been a lot of other matters that have been on the forefront of our And obviously, there's been a lot of other matters that have been on the forefront of our agenda. But there has been a subcommittee of us who have talked about next steps and how to, how to kind of refocus our work with them to take advantage of the fact that we have their advice and focus them on shorter term needs, such as in particular, the JW space issues in the next three to five years. And so we're still working internally. We haven't had a lot of time to meet before we go back to M&amp;M and kind of re, re, refocus their work. And we will come to the board or, or brief the board offline before we, we go back to make sure we, everyone knows, you know, that we're not changing the focus entirely, but we're kind of bringing it in from this larger, long-term master planning to more, how can we take advantage of what they're offering to us, what we need in the next three to five years in terms of space? So I just wanted to let people know we're working on that.
Thank you.
And if there's no further business, can I have a motion to dismiss? Do adjourn. Daphna? Brian, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you all.